Hello, good evening. Thank you for joining our board. I'm Brian Words today. Before we start our board meeting, it's customary that we say grace. Thompson.
Follow, we're grateful for summer, for warm weather and great things to do outside. Thank you for the break that our students and faculty have to regroup, refresh, and enjoy some time off. Thank you for Ray Jones and his service to us for so many years. And we pray for him and his family for blessings as he moves on to Wisconsin. We're so grateful to have had him for so many years, and we thank you for him. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. And we'll come back to you, Mr. Jones. Normally, we do recognition, but tonight, we will, with summer, we are going to go ahead and move on to our public and board meetings, comments, public and board comments. At this time, if there's anyone in the public who wish to make any comments about the agenda, please step forward. Seeing none, are there any board or administrative comments before we get into councils? All right. Music council did not meet last month, and no update there. Athletic council? I missed the meeting, but Mr. Mercer, were there?
I think probably the highlight of that meeting had to do with working with Parks and Rec on an aquatics position to assist us with scheduling of high school and middle school facilities, providing lifeguards, and potentially expanding our Cub Quest program. Those conversations are ongoing, but we spent the bulk of our time working on that. And John shared, and we had quite a lengthy conversation about that, but that was it.
Do you know if, did we, how did we fare in the mid-state meeting conference overall?
I do not know, although I believe we won the boys. We came in second or third with the girls, and I think we won the all-sports trophy, but I haven't had that confirmed. John didn't have final tally when we met last time.
Great, thank you. Very good. Legislative council, I don't believe there was a meeting. Super senate, strategic task force, I don't believe there was a meeting there either. Communication committee, did not meet. Collective bargaining, we did not meet. Central line. I heard it. Any update that you're aware of?
None that I'm aware of.
All right, we'll move on. RDC?
Nothing, nothing really new that affects us.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, I believe there was an update to the personnel report. Mr. Mercer?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight just a couple of things. We had some late year retirements, and I wanted to make sure that we adequately honored those folks. Dave Clark is retiring from the high school. Dave served as both science and health teacher, was, of course, a longtime basketball coach. Thirty-seven years of service, so we certainly thank Dave for all of his efforts on behalf of Franklin Community Schools. And Gwen Craig also announced her retirement from the high school, foreign language teacher after forty-two years. So we honor them and wish them well in their retirement. I would also highlight that we have hired David Young as our head girls soccer coach. Dave is a Franklin grad and was the assistant boy soccer coach, so we welcome him to the head coaching ranks and look forward to seeing what the girls can do with him at the helm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move for approval of the consent agenda? There's been a motion for approval. Are there any questions about the consent agenda or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion please signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed? Motion passed. All right. Moving on to superintendent reports, the 2016-2017 budgets. Welcome.
This is the budget schedule, which is forthcoming here, getting ready to get started. We are, we have been in the throes of working on that for the last many weeks, and it'll be an all-out sprint for about six weeks, starting here at the tail end of June. Just a couple of dates to highlight for you on the calendar. August eighth is the date that I would recommend that we do the budget workshop and approval to advertise. That's the normal board meeting, and typically when we have done that. If we do that, then we would be back in September on the twelfth for the public hearing, and then on October seventeenth, we run into spring break situation again, so I believe the board meeting gets pushed back to October seventeenth. So that would be the official adoption of the 2017 budget. So that's the budget calendar. Any questions, anything I can answer for you in that regard? Okay. If we could, we'll move on to the internal controls presentation. And I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I think there's some things that the board realistically needs to know, and I've communicated a little bit with you in Friday notes. There are two items that the state of Indiana has now required that we take on, beginning literally now. One of them is transparency of contracts, which we've been working with Mr. Young to try to determine which contracts have to be posted online, starting July one. We've been working on that. That's not in your agenda tonight, but we'll handle that one. And then this one is the internal controls document from the State Board of Accounts. And this is a State Board of Accounts-generated document that I've tweaked a little bit to share some items with you. This is a purpose of the internal controls. It's about accountability, transparency, and all honesty, putting two sets of eyes on things to the degree that we can to ensure integrity and loyalty and all those kinds of things. And that's what the State Board of Accounts is after. This slide shows you a little bit about what the State Board of Accounts expects to do, and I've highlighted in red what the board is authorized to do via the State Board of Accounts. One is to ensure a minimum level of control standards are adopted, and that's on the agenda tonight, and I'm going to ask for your approval in just a few moments. And then secondarily, that you ensure that training is being conducted on internal controls throughout our district. If you'll notice, under the school management portion, we are, as administrators, certifying that the internal control standards have been adopted by you, and secondarily, that we take care of the training, which we intend to do. It's actually a twofold mechanism. Number one, we've got to get all the folks that handle money on a regular basis trained by July the first. I'm working with Mr. Sprout to set up a similar item to our bloodborne pathogens, where everybody can go in and watch this thirty-minute webinar. But that will be done, I think, this week, and we'll get that out to all of our building treasures when all the other personnel come back in the fall. If you handle money, you have to get trained. So even if it's a teacher that takes money one time a year, theoretically, by State Board of Accounts, they have to get trained, so we'll be taking care of that on your behalf. Noncompliance, here's what happens if we don't do this, just real quickly. Number one, State Board of Accounts will issue a comment in our audit cycle the next time that we're audited. If they come back in a second audit cycle and you haven't done anything about it, they give you sixty days to get it taken care of. If it's not corrected in sixty days, they send it to the Department of Local Government Finance, and they will not approve your budget. So that's the string of events, so naturally, we need to get it done. Here's the timeline for compliance. By July one, you've passed a resolution, and we've sent out the requisite training. And we'll catch the teachers and the rest of the folks when they get back in August. I realize it's after July one, but that's as fast as we can get it done. Johnson, most, if not all, the Johnson County schools are moving that way. By August nineteenth, the twenty-ninth of 2017, I have to ensure, via the gateway, which is a site with all the information loaded about schools and government entities, I have to certify that we've adopted standards and that all of our personnel receive training. So whatever we do with internal controls after tonight, we'll all be experts on internal controls. Whatever we do, all has to be authorized and uploaded and done by August twenty-ninth of 2017. Here's some items that just tells you a little bit about what internal controls is. I'm not going to read through each one of them, but in effect, it's to prevent fraud and to enhance transparency and to get two sets of eyes on things to ensure accuracy and those kinds of things. Here's a couple of benefits. Eliminates the opportunity for fraud, lack of findings in our audit, so hopefully, we'll get better at what we do so that we don't get audit findings. And probably most importantly, to the business guide, is number three, which is the cost of an audit has increased exponentially. Historically, it's about six to eight thousand dollars. By the way, our audit is still not complete, which started March of last year, and we are in June of this year, so at some point, hopefully, it'll be complete, but it's not now.
Do they get paid by the hour?
Actually, they get paid by the day and by the person, and it used to be forty-five dollars per day per person. Now it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day per person. So rather than six to eight thousand, I'm going to project thirty to thirty-five thousand. So the better we are in the internal controls area and the more confidence they have in our ability to execute it, the less time they spend with us. In effect, we're saving dollars. That's the big difference. This is where I'm going to move through pretty quickly. There are actually five component pieces to internal controls and seventeen principles that the State Board of Accounts asks us to put a plan into place to execute each of these components and principles. And so we're going to be working right off of those, and actually, when you see the resolution tonight, if you haven't looked at it yet, you'll see them replicated in there. I just wanted to make sure that those were clear. The five component areas are control environment, risk assessment, control activities, information and communication, and monitoring. And then there'll be lots of bullet points in each of those five. Essential functions, what they want us to do under the third bullet is segregation of duties in large part. Four categories are authorization, custody, record-keeping, and reconciliation, and so as we script our plan, we have to make sure that we've got those features covered. Ideally, no one person would have control of two or more of those above categories. This is an example of what the State Board of Accounts suggests we do for one area. So control activities over federal grants, it's a nineteen-step process to ensure transparency. Now, take that and multiply it by the three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two other things that we have to do with nineteen steps, and you can see how complicated it can get really fast. So, you know, I kind of, we have viewed this as there's a spectrum. Spectrum is you simply are compliant, and the other end of the spectrum is you are as good at this as can possibly be done, and I really think that most school corporations, Franklin included, will be somewhere in between. It's got to be reasonable so that it can be managed, so that you're not hiring six or eight new people, and at the same time, you have to be compliant and hopefully getting as close to the other end of the spectrum as you possibly can. There's three items that I'm recommending as next step. One of them's going to be handled hopefully tonight, and that's adopting the resolution. Two, we'll be conducting the required training by July first, and then over the course of the next year, we'll begin planning for the internal control implementation. That's what I know about internal controls. I can't be more specific on the seventeen principles at this point because we have not compiled that. Thankfully, folks in Region One, which is way up north, I believe had twelve people on a committee, spent literally hundreds of hours, and actually worked through an internal controls plan that they sent to the entire state. So we will be working off of that, and I hope it will speed up the process significantly. Any questions on internal controls?
Do you have to do all the training yourself? Are you bringing somebody else in to help you? How's the training going to be done?
Initially, there's a webinar, a thirty-minute webinar, that I think we're going to use, and what I talked with Matt about was the possibility of creating our own that's applicable primarily to our building treasurers and those folks that handle money in buildings a lot. I think we can do it faster than thirty minutes, and I think we can make it more applicable to us rather than going through that thirty-minute State Board of Accounts generic training. We just didn't have time. We didn't get this until RISBO Conference toward the end of May, so we just got it. But eventually, Bill, we'll make a bit of an adjustment on what we're training with.
Other questions?
Yes.
Have you established your materiality threshold, or are you going to?
We already have.
Okay.
Yes. That was done a couple of months ago, but I think--
I know, but at that meeting. What is that threshold? You remember?
Five thousand. And there's some conversation about whether that's, there was some confusion on the materiality threshold, as I'm sure you're aware. Basically, when do you tell the State Board of Accounts that money has been misappropriated or disappeared, or you just simply made a mistake? Anytime, according to what I understand, Roger, and this was after we adopted that, anytime that there's a theft or misappropriation of money, it's my understanding, we have to notify the State Board of Accounts immediately. I don't care if it's fifty-five cents or four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five.
Correct.
So yes, it's done. Way to go.
And you've probably talked about this, but that also, those resolutions also require referral of questionable items over your threshold to the local prosecuting attorney as well as State Board of Accounts. So there's some, as Jeff said, these are things to really pay attention to.
Fortunately, we haven't had any of that internally. Hopefully, we do not, so we don't have to enact that, but if we do, there's a series of steps that we have to take and folks that we have to notify. That's it on internal controls, unless you have a question for me?
Do you look for approval, Jeff?
No, not yet, but I'm ready as soon as Mr. Words hits.
All right.
Did we need to make mention of the fact that we're going to walk something on?
We, I will, yep. So the student Google Summit?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You ready for the adoption of the standards? Okay. If you'll take a look at what's on the screen, just real quickly, it's a replication of what you just saw in the PowerPoint with the five components and seventeen principles, and I'm asking for adoption of the internal control standards. The detail is not here clearly. We have to work through that, but you're basically saying that, A, we have a resolution relative to internal controls, and we will be training as required. So I ask your approval of that document this evening.
So moved.
There's been a motion, move for approval. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to policy seventy-five thirty.
I'll take it. This has to do with personal communication devices. I believe that was discussed last month, board-owned, am I correct in that? Yes. Okay. Board-owned personnel communication devices, so you've got some background on that. If not, we'll get questions answered by Mr. Sprout, but devoid of questions, we would ask your approval of policy seventy-five thirty.
Yeah, we did discuss that last. Are there any questions?
No, move approval.
There's been a motion for approval. All those in favor signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. And also from last month, elementary book rental, CBIS book rental, and Franklin Community Middle School book rental, for your approval this evening. Roger, can we lump those together?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm asking for your approval of those three buildings' book rental for this next year.
There any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
On to bus driver and assistant wage scales?
Mr. Dickinson is here tonight, so his staff is here with him as well. That's too small for anybody to read, but hopefully, you have it in front of you. There's been no changes since Mr. Doty, Mr. Dickinson presented, there you go, thank you, man, last month. It is as it was before. A couple of items that I thought I would highlight in conversation with Bill and Doug, just to bring back from last month, this is not new material, per se. The estimated additional expense in moving to increase driver wage and bus assistant wage cumulatively will be about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in this next year. And I might mention now, we're supplementing and have supplemented through no fault of this department, and I've said this every time I've stood up in front. We're supplementing on the average about two hundred and twenty thousand every year now because this group is underfunded. And so we're looking at about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year that we've got to figure out how to pay for. I would go on record as saying it's time for this to happen and certainly hope that it can, and so it has my support. There is some consideration, I think, moving forward for ways in which we might be able to buy some of that back in the future, and Bill outlined those for you last month. They were, continue to supplement from the rainy day fund, which we know will be somewhere in the four fifty range. We can increase the amount being charged to athletics, band, choir, et cetera. We can backcharge the buildings for all field trips and require that they pay for those kinds of things. There were two other recommendations. These would be more long-term, I think, in scope, and that's to go back and review the recommendations from Revenue Generation Committee, which was a couple of years ago. Or we could do some research on a half-mile and one-mile walk zones. We're not here to push on any of those tonight, but just wanted to make sure that that was still out in front of you, because I think at some point, we've got to figure out, despite the fact that they're underfunded, we've got to figure out how to come up with four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars because you don't want to continue to be upside down into perpetuity, I don't believe. At least that doesn't work well in a budget setting, so. Anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Doug is here to answer any additional questions you may have spinning off of last month. Otherwise, we would ask approval of this action tonight.
Move for approval.
There's been a motion. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Now that it's related but not related. There were a lot of good discussions last month that we had that were not necessarily related to the financial piece of it, and I can't recall. Some of it was around behavior. Was there going to be a follow-up to that, some of the non-financial? I couldn't remember.
Yeah. We've got a whole plan in place that will look at theories on the fact that Mr. Beck, Mr. Beck is a student here and kind of been charged upon to behavior and discipline.
Okay.
So looking forward to working on that and getting something going for the start of the school year.
Okay, good. So maybe after the school's started, maybe you can just give an update at some point, just to see how it's going, what adjustments we might need to make.
Sure.
Just trying to help.
And there were several items. They did a great job.
Yeah, without question. Yeah, great job. I just want to make sure it's--
There was some conversation at last week's administrative retreat, and there's some teachers attended too, and we talked a little bit about that the first day, so it's still in motion, and we'll be back to you.
Good.
Just have one on the comment. I just want to say thanks for the work that you did and the process that you followed. It was hard, but it was thorough, and hopefully, you guys are satisfied with the outcomes in it.
Speaking for all of them, I know that they appreciate it very much, and finally, it's a jump forward to match their peers and start moving forward and working with things such as bus discipline and things like that, so appreciate it very much.
Good. Well done.
Well done. All right. We do have one more item to walk in that's a discussion item. The student Google Summit is, was intended to be a discussion item that we would like to make it an action item. Do we have the vote to make it an action item, or?
Yeah. All right. So moved, make it an action item.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed? All right. So moving on, the student Google Summit, Mr. Sprout.
Thank you. This is an exciting opportunity. The Google Summit that we've had over the past couple of years has continued to grow. What I'm excited about this particular one is it's student-focused. So as we start talking about being student-centered and innovative, we start focusing on individual student growth, communicating with the ed tech team about what Franklin's next steps might be, is to take that technology, take that training, and provide it directly to students. They were excited about the opportunity. As we began talking, they've narrowed, we've narrowed it down to the April seventh date, potentially. There's a great opportunity for us to work with students. Leah is very excited about it, but we'll probably also include the middle school and intermediate schools as their one-to-one also. So what this exactly looks like for Franklin and the ed tech team is yet to be seen, but they have provided the opportunity for us, and we're excited about it. What we will do is focus on the implementation in the classroom for students and work along with the principals, if we can get this to school down. There is a price per student. At this time, the expectation is that this comes out of E-rate, not out of student fees or anything alike, so we would be able to provide that without affecting the taxpayer. This is our entrance ticket in, and as we're collaborating with them and trying to create this new opportunity for students, let me show you our exit out if it happens not to work. We do have a thirty-day cancellation process, so as we work through this and we continue to communicate with the board on what this looks like, we have up to thirty days before the event to actually cancel out of it. In addition, they have put some changes at the bottom, and if there's, as we continue to develop this process, we can document those changes and add those to the document. So I would request approval of this initial document so we can continue talks with the ed tech team about the student Google Summit, or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What is E-rate?
E-rate is, if you look at any phone bill you pay, your cell phone, your telephone bill, there is a USFAC, I think, is a charge that's taken out, and that actually comes back to schools. And so based on our cost of phone lines and such, the federal government uses our free and reduced rate to come up with a formula and then sends us a check for the X amount of dollars, but it's based on free and reduced rate and the amount we spend on technology communications.
Okay. And I can't read what that is, but how much is it per student?
Sure. With a hundred and one students to two hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and sixty-nine dollars per person, potentially with a regional price of one fifty-two. Two fifty-one to four hundred goes to one fifty-nine per person. The students, four hundred and one to six hundred would be one thirty-nine per person, and six hundred goes to a hundred and eleven per person.
And is that just Franklin students, or is this--
I look forward to extending those conversations on. A lot of that depends on what the school looks like, if we do it on a weekend versus a school day and such.
I see.
I would love to see it beyond Franklin students, but--
So what are we approving tonight?
This initial document. They want to make sure that Franklin is ready. I've negotiated up to this point, and they're like, we got something in writing, and we, before we get you on the calendar, they need something in writing saying that we're interested in proceeding.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I'll move forward. Sorry, I was reading. Thank you. There's motion, is there any questions, any other questions or comments? Hearing all those in favor of the motion, please signify by the sign of eye. Eye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sprout. All right, on to discussion items. FCHS book rentals, Mr. Mercer?
This is a twenty-two-page document for your review this month. This includes all of the high school rental and fees, which are significant in number, and so we're not asking for approval tonight, we're asking for your review this month. Any questions that you may have tonight, will probably need to be delayed until Ms. Brown Alley gets back, as she worked closely with the high school on that, but we're just sharing this with you tonight and initiate some conversation prior to next month.
All right. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mercer.
Thank you.
All right. Now on to Mr. Jones.
Dr. Lindening couldn't be here because he's on vacation, but he wanted to send along, this is on behalf of all of Franklin School Board and administration and teachers and anyone who might have had any interaction, which would pretty much be anyone surrounding county. On behalf of Franklin Community School Board trustee, we would like to thank you for volunteering so generously for the past eight years. After serving as an educated administrator for forty-four years, you remain close to both the school and the community. You continue to make Franklin a great place. Thank you for spending the time on our new teachers each year as a guide on our bus tour. Our district is rich in culture and history, and we appreciate you such, with such pride in educating our new staff, so thank you. Thank you for serving the Johnson County-- you for serving the Johnson County Library Board as an appointee of Franklin Community Schools. Thank you for working so diligently for the Johnson County Retired Teachers Association. Certainly, there's lots of teachers, not just in our community, but in others that benefit from that work that you do. So thank you. Thank you for your dedication to your community and your wife as well, Goldie, who have served on many organizations for the countless hours. These organizations make our community a much better place. So lastly, you've joined us here month after month to assist us in videotaping the school boards. Thank you for your tireless work, tireless work. You're a valued employee and your contributions to Franklin Community Schools beyond employment will be a lasting legacy. Thank you and best wishes.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a pleasure, and I have a lot of things I'm going to miss about it, but it's a great, great opportunity that you will carry on and be better than you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to at least leave the stool that you would sit on on bus trips?
I think that stool disappeared. I had, we had good news. I know Mr. Ballard and Dr. Clendenning, he's going to take my place on this bus tour. I've been there last several years. I really enjoy it. But we've had a volunteer and I.
We'll meet with her and so forth, but Jane Huey has agreed to take my place on the bus tour. She said, I think that'd be interesting. And so I think she'll probably even do a better job than I, than I'd had because she's been here longer than I have. So that's good news.
Are you going to let her use your roller skates also?
I, I had, let's see, I have two pair of roller skates and I have donated those back to the skate club and they have found new homes with some needy families. So my, I think my roller skating days are over.
Well, our sons had the good fortune of, of being able to experience you as a principal and, and we, we sure do appreciate everything you've done and, and so well at, at so many different schools. You were principal at, at Southside and Northwood and, and Union too. So you must have gotten tired of being principal.
I figured when I went out to Union, I'd retire from there, but always interested in technology from my high school days. I think I was one of two people that could thread a sixteen-millimeter machine, and I can still thread that, a manual sixteen-millimeter machine. Not very many people even know what that is nowadays. But I was interested in technology. So when technology was booming, I got asked to become technology director and really, really thoroughly enjoyed that and seeing the technology. And as I said, when I retired, the thing that gives me the greatest satisfaction is seeing how all the employees, all the students are using technology. Because you as a board or the board at that time, that was a big investment. And, you know, it's like building a building. Will they come? Well, they came and are now using it and keeping Matt and his crew very busy, I'm sure. But thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mercer, the calendar. Just a couple of items. We have a board retreat with, with the school board next week. I think it's maybe Tuesday. And I think Dr. Clendenning maybe shared the location for that. New teacher orientation will be August third through the fifth. And although it's hard to believe that I'm about to say this, the start of school is August the tenth. It'll be here before you know it, certainly. Excuse me. Thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.